Seven twenty-five. And I, I misquoted this. Twenty twenty-four was sixty-two million. Twenty twenty-three was sixty million. Now sixty-seven, seven twenty-five. Uh, you know, assessed, uh, for the real estate, the personal property tax is zero. Um, the city did away with that several years ago. And the council's wishes to continue to do away with it this time. Have any questions? No questions? Easy group, thank you. We're gonna close at six oh three. No, we'll get the council meeting started here until the council's telemeeting and executive session.
You want us to step out?
No. I don't think. I don't want to get really here. What's going on if the kids start making noise?
I'll say things, we'll tell you about it.
We will be legitimate folks. If all of us care so.
You're right to.
Oh, is that a Friday?
There you go.
Thank you. We're having a Lions Club meeting here.
All right, Phil, stay on the pledge, please. Let's get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take moments of silence, please. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get this started. So. Uh, we need to go with the council meeting minutes from July fourteenth, two thousand and five. Has nobody got those read and everything?
Good job.
Oh, yeah, I read them all. I'm worried not that. Uh, there we got though, where they were thinking.
We have public ears.
Oh, yeah, we'll also have the executive session that's gonna be included in the hunt now as well. So. If we're good on that, then we can just make the motion exempt. Okay, we have a second, God's second. Mark, we start with you?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
All righty. We are going to, Chief Gibbons is not here right now, so.
We have a tax that we've probably worried on the.
That's sorry to take care of that.
Oh, didn't know that.
Representing the fire department will be the captain.
Yeah.
Captain Sean McClear. For a quarter.
Evening.
Evening.
Uh, July was a, uh, pretty busy month, uh, for us. Uh, totaled a hundred and forty calls month of July. That put us right at nine hundred for the year so far. Day, we're at ninety-four and four. So, we're already in August first eleven days. Um. Not, uh, anything on my paper here for the post-preference values for the city or, uh, rule for July. Um. Couple things, uh, July, the EMT class, we had the EMT class in July that's certainly not required by our department's part of, uh, those guys that recently finished that, they finishing their clinical hours, they do so many hours of ride time on um, so they should be testing out the national registry and license EMT kids. Uh, so I have several ETS on the department. But I think it's a good thing. And Chief Gibbons just started the fire academy, the fire captains. Get several people through the state certified hazmat, fight one and two certification. Um, clearly there's twenty-one or twenty-two students in the class total, um, settled those coming from the fire department.
Also have uh, several to finish up on the instructor as well.
Yeah, there's several, uh, members of the department that just took an instructor course, um, and they will be testing out very shortly through the state um, to be certified instructors to the setting serving, they'll teach these classes. Um, and teach more in-house things, bringing other people, so we can host more classes. Um, build, build the department up a little bit better, I think.
Are y'all teaching any CPR first aid classes in public?
Yes, yes, we offer those all the time. Uh, we actually had this week, uh, was Thursday, me and Lieutenant Brown, I could be teaching a uh, CPR class to be Christian Catholic, uh, the teachers and those administrative staff.
You guys are through DHA, right?
Yeah, DHA instructors, uh, myself, Lieutenant Brown, Chief Gibbons are all instructors. And he's, uh, maybe I'll put in a couple more.
Well, I didn't want to retire from doing it myself until I knew we had a group.
Absolutely. I think, I think our guys that, um, are doing it, obviously Chief Gibbons is, uh, got a lot of experience in that stuff. He's a national registered EMT and then Lieutenant Brown was, uh, he's recertifying as national EMT, but he has the EMT license for a long time out of state, worked a lot of, a lot of drama calls, a lot of history about. So, very good. Public, uh.
Anybody else, Danny?
Yeah.
Anybody got any questions for Sean? If not, then Sean, thank you for your time. Thanks for calling up Danny. Sorry, Chief Letson.
Um, it's a little month for us. Uh, we had just under eight hundred calls from services this month. Um. But we were busy in other areas. Um, we did have two felony drug arrests this month. Um. Which we, I mean, that is a somewhat whole lot that was all on the same shift, so we're trying to see if we're gonna pick up on that. Um, our SOB team was activated two times this month. Um, for high-risk search for us. And all of your excuse successfully. Um. Grant update. Um, the local law book of block grant that I, that I was, um, was able to secure, we had ordered the the equipment permit, uh, this last week. So hopefully that'll be coming in and we'll get that distributed. Uh, new cars, uh, we did prep a couple of new cars, uh, in Springfield that, um, full of Dodge. And, uh, good news is we have one of those back. The bad news is one of them broke down before we got in our Springfield, so. Um, it's named Dix. It was a, a, uh, issue when it was manufactured and, and they made sure that it would be taken care of. Uh, the other thing I have is, um, I think I've heard you talk about policy and procedures. That is a sample of what we have released so far. Um, there's twenty-five pages there that you can go through at your leisure. Uh, when you get ready for some more, uh, chapter threes, well over three hundred pages. So, we've got ten chapters.
You've been a light reading?
Yes. I did finish it. We, uh, purchased that program earlier this year. Um, it's through Lexipol. Um, they're a national company that, that updates and, and does nothing but law enforcement, um, fire department EMS personnel, or, uh, personnel policies and, um, operating procedures. So, I've been here twenty-eight years today, um, and, uh, I don't know. I do not know that our policy's ever been completely revamped. So. So that's, it's a huge step right there. And that was about a six-month process of getting that completed and, um, through Lexipol, the guys and girls will be tested monthly on policies and procedures. They'll also have access to a caller. So anytime there's a question, we have that right at the fingertips. So.
We recently put on two more new guys, correct?
Two more new guys, yes. I have one, um, that's, that's finished his field training and is out in the field already. And I have one that right from July, so he's still pretty fresh.
Seeing both out there for the heritage test, that they look like they're good for each other.
Yeah, and, you know, that was kudos to the heritage class in the city because that was a great turnout. Yeah, lots of people.
How many vacancies do we have now for officers of? Okay, I just, I thought, that's, I just wanna verify, very good. Congratulations, that's good.
Anybody got any other question for Chief?
Just thank you for all yours of service, Chief.
That was, I was just saying.
No, it's important for us to all know and recognize. No, I think it's important to say that.
It's important that those have been updated.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you so much.
I'd like to say, uh, Chief Letson, as George Jones would say, gave me the grand tour, uh, Mountain Grove today. So I appreciate him showing me around and so, great guy, a great tour and a great advocate of Mountain Grove right there. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, the Lord is going to read us the senior report now.
This is for the month of July at the senior center. Uh, in the dining room, sixty-plus years. One thousand nine hundred and eighty-six meals. Dining room, under sixty, thirty-five meals. Home delivery freezer meals, three thousand and thirty-eight. And, um, monthly meal total, five thousand and fifty-nine. And I, I do wanna say that I have been giving calls from Ava. And they are very complimentary about the Mountain Grove Senior Center. They've been coming up here trying to get ideas.
I want to challenge our council that you volunteer. I volunteer Friday out there to help set up the grant card, serve the meals and that type of thing. And it is a blessing to be able to do it. If you have time and it helps those girls at work out there, they run their honeys off. And it's, it's really a blessing to them to have somebody to come. I get a hug from them. I'll tell you how much they appreciate them. So I, I would challenge any of you to have some time during the week, go out and help serve lunch.
I, I kinda agree with Brenda on that. Not necessarily on just that alone, but just as councilmen and members of this city, I think we all need to set a good foot forward and when there's something we can get involved in, let's be involved in it and show the people that we're there. We're not just here sitting behind the bench. We're, we're there for the people because we are the people with them, so.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, I chose Friday so y'all can't have my pride. Because they have a band out there and they dance.
And I also heard she's got punching gloves out there, so don't you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the assistant advisory report and Cheyenne Smith is the one there for us.
Evening. Um, if you look over your minutes here, you'll see, um, given our topics of discussion, we went over pitching for a use tax, which was given to us, it's been on our agenda for multiple months here. Finalizing events for June and July brainstorming, um. We, we were given directive that we needed to desensitize the, the writing on the ballot. When it comes down to it, I think people need to be, people need to be aware of what they're voting for and they need to see that wording. It's not gonna become any simpler overnight, so whether we put the exact wording on the ballot or not, I mean, that's only gonna give us a leg up, so. We, we feel like it needs to be the exact wording, at least the first three or four sentences um, that they're gonna see when it comes.
I think, well, we have to even, it has to have that on there too.
On our graphic, we, it was brought, they said that we need to desensitize the writing for the ballot on our graphic.
Gotcha.
Is that correct?
I think.
It was a suggestion that word tax on there could be a turnoff, I guess, if you will. So we're looking at ways to.
But that's what it is, is use tax.
Correct, but a different way to present it just from a marketing perspective to gain a little bit more traction, I think.
Well, good thing we have a marketing specialist up our own now. And the word we read on the internet tax, um, a little desensitizing there. If that works for you guys, if you wanna let us know. Um, I did see a graphic from Chief Gibbons a couple of weeks ago. I do know that he is currently still on vacation, but we would like to look at that graphic. Um, our sketch that came from Dale, um, that got presented, we, we like it, but there needs to be more to it. I mean, we can't sell a graphic to people and show them consistently and expect them to vote on it without them knowing what it means. Um, discussing from what we talked about last meeting, that we need to be very upfront and frank that the pool is not directly what this is going for. We talked about the path road, paving a path, showing different things that it can be applied for since it will be all going to the general fund and not directly towards the pool, which is what we don't wanna be misconceiving about. So if you guys are on the same page with that, we would like to use the page road and we'd like to use the graphic from Chief Gibbons. Um. I had not made contact with him because he's on vacation, but whether we need to do that or one of you will reach out to him to look at that graphic and approve it, we would like to get on the ball with this so people can be seeing it before it's too late, so.
I think sooner is better because I don't know if anybody else watched, but, um, there was a ballot done statewide, you know, just the other day. And the only use tax that I seen passed was somehow they had it worries with Leos. And that guy won the, with what? Leos. Longboard, but, oh. And so, um, it's, we're an uphill battle, bag.
And they had to go into law enforcement or they were the ones.
Yeah, they, that's what they're earmarking theirs focus to be that. And so I think Rick said, well, back go the firefighter and police, you know, get tend to get a little smile. So we're, we're firing the bad major battle right now as it is. And so let's not sugarcoat it, but we need to work hard to, as she said, be as transparent as we can be. Get the word out there as fast as we can because we're, we're fighting now. I mean, there's people arguing to the teeth about it. So.
So you're saying that, um, cleanse design, you've seen it? But you don't have it where you can send it to us?
No, he showed me a couple of months.
So it's just when he gets back and he has an email to us and then we can start maybe emailing about it. Thank you. She'll be back next week.
I think it's at the end of Friday, right? The end of this Friday, he'll be back.
So it'll start Monday, I think we'll leave that next week.
Um, suggested for that, you know, we're, we're still in the dreams that we're gonna, we're gonna do all the legwork for you for this, but with that being said, we need you to be a part. So we would like to get this image back so we can start doing the legwork for you on that. Um, we do feel like there needs to be a face for this. Um. You know, whether it be council that stands behind that or mayor or the administrator, whatever that may be, we need a face for this campaign that, that goes hand in hand with our graphic. Um, if you guys aren't opposed to that. Um, we did talk about as far as support, free support for getting the word out, the back of the water bills was still suggested. Um, local radio, we have many business owners that have free advertising through the chamber and we are willing to utilize our free business advertising for this. Um.
Have you talked to Chamber yet?
No, we have not.
Okay.
Um, we have a meeting set up next weekend. Um, and we're willing to do that, and we just need you guys to be a part as well. Um. Events are being finalized for what we can do. If you want an exact list, whether it's to the, at the senior center or whatever it may be. It was also brought up that we'd like to do a streamlining here held at City Hall for people to come in and basically voice their opinions and I think it would be a good opportunity for us to educate them in a professional manner on what good it could do. Um. People are not very active to jump in unless they have an opportunity to be evented. So if we give them that opportunity upfront and educate them, we feel like that would be, be the best way to get the foot off the ground, along with a graphic. Um, we did say that we needed a consistent graphic, so that's what we're still waiting on.
I thought we had one pretty much approved as far as the graphic.
No, there was just a man standing on there.
Oh.
No wording, no, nothing. Um, that was our request that we did get that back so we could start doing things like that, but we've not received anything back.
That was a graphic that we were presenting.
We're just not gonna fly over the man's stand out.
Well, that, and if that's what we're wanting is something different because we had proposed that and then brought it to the council and, and didn't have any opposition to it.
Yes, I thought it was pretty well approved.
Well, it may be something like two different things. She may be something like the logo of the header and then the information below it. Does that mean one thing has all the information on it?
So when we talk about a graphic that we want to use, whether it's in the newspaper, on the back of the water bill, whatever it is, we want people to be consistent. We wanna see vote yes, we wanna see the wording that's gonna be on the ballot and we wanna show them a pathway on what that they, what they're gonna receive from choosing yes. Um, we don't just want a picture of the road and expect that to.
I think, I think, and to me, that's a good approach because, you know, if you show a picture of fire, police, streets, everything, that's going toward, and this way, well, that's going toward, you'll get more response out of that than you would be if just.
And that's being as transparent as it can get considering we're going to the general fund. I mean, that's not putting us at the board on the line either, even though we're doing the legwork, you know, that's not being misconceiving and we are all comfortable doing that for you, showing that there are many options that will pave the path.
I think there's a little bit of misunderstanding there. It's not we're doing this to get, let's make that very clear. We want the citizens involved and that's why the citizen advisory board was developed. So it's not their council doing this because, let's face it, nobody cares for council. They, they don't think that the council is ever for them. That's just the way the fact of life is. That's why we wanted to appoint some people as a citizen by the board because we wanted to be by the people. So we're not putting this on you guys. We're wanting to bounce ideas off and make, this is a team effort. Not a we or you or anybody. This is a team effort that we all have to be unified in to get this thing even get off the ground.
That is correct, but if you're wanting to put it on the ballot in April, that is something we need to start working on now.
Yes. I agree.
Yes, and I, I do understand and respect what you're saying. Um, but we will be the ones doing the legwork as we were asked unless that has changed.
No, I mean, you guys are working hard. I, I've heard really good things from meetings. Uh, we'd like you to keep that up. Just, I mean, this is a team effort. They'll keep that ball rolling and keep going.
I kind of feel like we need to schedule a meeting in this month with all of us and the citizens advisory board, then we can get so make sure we're saying the same thing, get this graphic and get on the same page, you get it all done.
That's what I'm thinking here, Cheyenne say. We only meet once a month. Not that we couldn't meet more often, we just don't.
With them.
But, and then maybe when they're expecting that we might have something ready for them and when we don't, then they're waiting another month. Um, so if we.
They, you guys have it, Monday before us, correct?
That's correct, we haven't met last Monday.
It's, so, I mean, the doors are open. There's no reason we can't show up to listen to their stuff and have, and be able to be part of it, I mean. Wait, what time do you guys start?
Five thirty, they only show up to.
So, I mean. There you go, the door's open right there. We can all come in here. We don't have to have a specialized meeting. We can join in another meeting, listen to their ideas and then maybe get some input, but there again, we're all working together. So, I mean, are you finals out? Is coming in?
Oh, absolutely. We would love that. We would, we could get things there done a lot quicker and not wait thirty days. And not to be con, misconstrued, we're not, we don't feel that we're working, uh, not as a team. But we do know that we are gonna be doing the round. But we do know that we are going to be doing the grunt, the legwork for it. Um, and we don't feel we can do an adequate job. We have enough time to do that in. So we're, we're crunching the days here to get that out to the public and educate them.
When is your meeting with council? Or not the council, but the chamber?
Next week.
Next week? I think it would be beneficial if you was looking for somebody to be most aware of whatever. Maybe a dual role, uh, somebody from the city and one of the local businesses. On there to, uh. And help explain that this level's playing field for them. I mean, people's ordering offline, they're not going to the storm line thing and it's.
And our entrepreneur, they understand that. It, it's going to be the public that's voting on it.
I understand that, but in the past, we didn't have the support of the chamber. So they didn't realize, you know, and, you know, it's just now then that, that we're wanting every tax that I would get.
We still do not, we still do not have a hundred percent. We are working on that.
As far as the.
The chambers cooperation and helping.
Hopefully that, you said this.
I can't believe that, but anyway.
I was on the board when they first talked to them. They do absolutely do not support this.
Don't understand.
I thought tooth and nail, what, what was it? You know, what's the whole back of it? Um, basically just they don't want to look bad in front of the public. They don't want to push attacks, but you know.
You don't, you don't try.
One of, one of the business owners was, I predict, very against it.
And I think that comes in with part of what I said that may have gotten misconstrued when you were elaborating on being a team effort and not being separated here. Um, we, it will be put back on us if we do the forefront. Um, that's why we want to be very clear with that graphic that we consistently show and it'd be the same graphic of paving a pathway. Showing that there's multiple areas that this funding will be used for, not one direct. So in two years, if we don't have a pool, people aren't coming back on us and business owners and saying. You, you solicited this tax for this and we do not count this and now it's on us. Do you see what I'm saying? So that's our concern.
Could you, do you have my email? Okay, when you have that meeting with the count, our chamber, could you please send me a deal and then I will make sure and I will go appear and see Mr. Lloyd, my right hand man. And I'll get it out to the council. We'll, we'll do our part a little better getting them worked out. I mean, so.
We need to get you that graphic.
We need a graphic. We, I mean, we can't use our own business dollars to make copies and posts and.
We have no problem with getting those done.
And do all that, you know, if we don't have something that's approved by you.
Yeah, we had miscommunication on what the graphic is. So that, that's why I was saying, so if we're not new until the beginning of August. That would be as soon as we can get that finalized and we're not wait till your meeting. But, because I think that's what it is.
Why can't we get Clint to email the graphic to us?
No, if it's, if it's good, yeah.
Yeah.
But he had a lot of wording on his.
It, it had wording, it was on about investing in Mountain Grove the future. It was not too wordy, but it was graphic enough to show visual on, on what the goal was here. Our only suggestion was, he had a couple of different pictures, was putting a roadway in there. Um, to show that we're paving the path for a better future. You know, we have to start somewhere and this is where we have to start. That way people aren't upset in a year when they're not seeing what they were promised if they vote yes. That they understand that it is a pathway to move in the right direction for a better future. It's not going to happen overnight.
I will make contact with him after the meeting and make sure he gets that to me. We'll get that.
And that we actually have to approve it, is that correct? Like.
Well, if we can email it to everybody and get every approval, there's no reason we have to have a special meeting that we can now.
Well, how are we going to vote if we don't have a meeting? I mean, I don't, I didn't mean that.
Um, I think.
And then if we wait till the next monthly one to do it again.
We're behind.
Right, so at some point, we're going to have to be willing.
We're getting excited away from getting together for a few days. We like each other.
Have a special meeting or two to speed things along, to make up for some time.
While we look at a possibility of meeting then, after you get done with the chamber, so you have a better idea. And then we can maybe set up shortly after that, so it's fresh on her mind and their mind and we can get this.
Or would she rather have this for the chamber? I mean, are you okay to start it without that?
I mean, it looks more presentable. You can come in prepared, but I'm not against that now.
Everybody needs to push theirs off.
Well, I'm looking at, plan to email it, I mean.
I'm sure he can get to you and you can present that to me. I don't think that's a problem.
Once you start, does it incorporate the one that we were talking about that they already started and has more stuff to it kinda?
Yes, um, so it's been about too much, but my, if my memory serves me correctly, I mean, Marie Page and some of our, some of our groundlings may not be in color. But in parts, it was a visual in the writing. Um, it did have the van stand in the back with the banner about investing and then it had a couple of pictures. It had our roadways, it had a pool, it had children on parks, um, and it talked about voting yes for the use tax. We were not liking the use tax. We can change it to internet tax so people, um, understand that it's only on internet sales. It's not on their local grocery or Walmart bills. Um, but a lot of that is going to come into educating them when we present the graphic to them as well.
I think the biggest thing we liked from that is the invest in our hotel was the.
So let's, let Clint get it to, uh, so I'll, tomorrow I'll come from work. I will get it to Dolores' door. So send it out to everybody. Keep your thoughts and ideas and then once we get a whole, I'll probably get a copy as soon as we know something, probably so by Wednesday. You're going to have an idea from what we all have to say about it and we'll just move on.
I like the internet sale instead of the sales.
Basically, that's.
So that's something we want to know in the email too. You know, we don't want to do anything outside of parameters. So we don't want to make a flyer to post all over Mountain Grove. If you're not comfortable with it, it would be internet sales versus use tax sales. So that's something in that email. We're going to need to know directly from you as well.
Only thing I think on that, find out is, I think it's still going to say on the ballot, use tax. So we still have to connect with them. Or say internet primarily, still have to know it's the same thing.
You know, and if, if we want to get up on that venture, that's what we talked about in our meeting. If we could get a demographics, a lot of population is that, that are actually voting. So here in town, um, it was brought to our attention, we have three to five hundred voters, you know, the uproar of the school kind of brought up our voting ballot a little bit. Um, but what, what is our total number? What is the age group of demographics we're serving? How can we meet that with, um, advertisement? Whether it's at the senior center or it needs to be in the paper, you know, we can't really break that down to a science unless we have those demographics. So that was another thing we talked about was wanting to know what our voting demographics are to know how to word this better for, for the community.
Correct, you might know the answer. The next vote, uh, what's going to be the major topics other than the use tax? You know, any other major topics? That we generally bring out people like she said, the school deal kind of brought a lot of people. What do we know is going to be on the top of the ballot?
Other than the counties having theirs in November, uh, I, I'm not aware of any big ones yet.
So.
It puts just us and school board usually.
The reality is, we're going to have extremely low turnout. But it's those voters that we've got yet.
Probably are advantage.
That are educated on the area that, that know that.
Have you talked to the gentleman at our dog by chance? Cause he's got a lot of people that he votes and he's for, and I do believe. Yeah, and he's got a lot of people that do vote.
He was on our board.
Oh, he was? Okay, yeah, I think he left. Yeah, okay, so. That's, that's the only thing I can think of is let's start going to people that we kind of know vote. I know it's hard to say who votes, but let's start hitting those people.
I believe. And that.
Our numbers are going to be horrible to that this time. So we got to try to hit the ones that we do know vote, which. There's at least so many people in here right now that are going to be voting for, so that helps. I mean, honestly, we're going to, what do you think, Rick? Probably five hundred votes for?
That's on a high number. That was last year.
Yeah, so.
Couple hundred, two fifty.
You're going to get, like I said, we've got to get the seniors to vote because you're going to get those younger people probably going to begin. That will get out the vote in full, right?
So I'm going to task you, because you're at the golf course. Hit all those numbers, Brenda. Task you, hit all those at the senior center. And any of you guys around in these areas that are senior centers still have. I mean, it's going to take all of us and this is how we're going to, it's not the only way we're going to do this, honestly. It's just a whole team.
Yeah, and we've not been pushing it because we don't have that graphic. Once we have that, that will be.
We'll try to get that way too.
Have you, uh, have you been given any resources from Missouri Municipal League?
I did look into myself, yes.
Okay, yeah, so I, obviously they have like video graphics and everything and all of that, so.
Unfortunately, our surrounding towns have had attacks for a few years. So the things that they were up against when, when they were pushing for it are not the things that, you know, we have going for us on our side, but.
I think we, we got a little bit of different things and credit support there. It's just, and we just kind of figured out a way to get over this hump. I'd like to be the first one that everybody goes, holy cow, they actually got it passed. And you, I will tell you, if we get it passed, it's going to be because the hard work has been done.
Has anyone spoken with, uh, the council at Little Springs? They passed theirs first year. It was on their ballot.
How long was that?
That has been, so I was on the, the group, uh, West Plains, Mountain View, all them. In Al County and Texas County and stuff. I believe during that year, the only, the only proposal that failed was here in Mountain Grove. But every town that that passed in had to back the end of chamber call. There's our key.
It's been about three years, hasn't it?
That, that was in two thousand and eighteen, yeah.
So let's work on.
The other reason the chamber won't join is they, they say in their bylaws, they can't affect any elections.
I talked to one person, I, I won't give their name, but they're supportive. They're on the chamber. And they want to know themselves, why is it not? So, um, are you still active? Okay, I'll work on, I know a couple of them. That'll be, I'll put that on my tab.
Chamber to come and make with us.
Make, whatever it takes at this point in time, whatever it takes to get them on board. That's legal anyways. We're, we got to do it. We've got to get them in favor of this because Mark said the statistic and that's not a good statistic to be against, so.
And, and it will be a game changer for us, you know, and a lot of us business owners, we see that and we know what it can affect. Eddie Marie's, we're an Amazon hub distributor, the amount of packs we deliver on a daily basis inside the city of the months as well. Um, you know, a few times that by that percentage rate, we're well going to exceed Ava's amount. Each year, vibrations, just by the packages I deliver and we have to throw other hubs. So it is important if we want to. Get out of our debt and start over and have a leg up for these pools and paving a community, um, for our future. We, we do need this, you know, what do you need to meet with the chamber or whatever it takes. We, we do need this, so.
I can agree more.
We'll be waiting on that graphic in the email. I'll let you know when I hear back from Rebecca and say how many questions.
You know, and that, uh, you can't just be real calm. You just, you learn, you have them jump right in any chance you can.
We try to keep them organized, but.
But I mean, just be, so, yeah.
That's right, thank you and.
Skill set for that. So any, any.
Sure, he has a lot of.
You have, let us know.
I'd love to meet you sometime. Um, do me a favor, send me a reminder because I have short term memory, but email me with the list of which stuff we talked about so I can make sure and do my due diligence to get it all taken care of. Which Clint will be my first call as soon as we get done here. So. Thank you. Okay, yeah, do we have any further comments at this time or do we have any?
I'd just like to say one thing in fact.
Yes, sir. What's your name?
Ken Lewis. When I was with the Downtown Association, that was a five oh one C three organization, nonprofit. And we were governed by the IRS rules and we could not support any tax initiative, political initiative. Or religion initiative without the IRS coming down on us. So the current, uh, council, not council, but the chamber. May still be guided underneath those rules.
And those are the five oh one.
Five oh one C three, nonprofit organization.
Beautiful. I said, I wonder why they could in other towns. They're violating that.
They may be violating it, yeah.
We don't want to do that. So thank you for that. We do need to check into that. And so Bobby, do you know anything about that being on the former chamber?
I know, it's just in their bylaws.
Yeah, that, that, okay, we need to check into that too because we don't need to be doing that kind of stuff. So thank you very much for that information and we'll use that.
My IRS has changed their rules when I was on the Downtown Association.
Well, a half a year or so.
This was on the ballot last time here in Mountain Grove. They had meetings at the school. And had people there that knew exactly how to define this to everybody. And I think that there needs to be one voice that really knows what they're talking about to get it out there.
Well, so, so we're all clear, so that way we could make this known. It actually is against the law for the city administrator or any city employee. To go out and say pass the use tax or don't pass the use tax. So I will be not saying anything. In regards to pass the use tax or don't pass the use tax, nor can any city employee say that.
Council or elected officials, you can say whatever you want.
But me, Chief Ledso or any other fifty-three employees cannot, that violates Missouri ethics, cannot. Say pass the use tax or don't pass use tax. So for me to be the poster child, not going to happen. For any of the city employees to be the poster child, not going to happen. So otherwise you're looking at a lawsuit.
So we can hold the bagger up or whoever we just absolutely want to be.
Yeah. I think I'm right on that.
Yeah, I'm right.
Good permission to have. So we're getting somewhere. We're, we're learning some more new stuff.
We're allowed to inform.
Correct.
We could, we can inform them like you were saying on our order bills. We just can't use the words vote for or vote.
Correct, or support, or you can just bring the general information. That's correct. So like Missouri Municipal League, I was asking her about Missouri Municipal League. They have a trifold brochure, they have a video. We can take that, city employees can give that out as educational pieces. If somebody walks into city hall, we could, we could provide that to them. But where it draws the line is we cannot say, yeah, you need to support this, so.
So we'll have to, next time we have a meeting with our employees, let them know that too, so we can make sure. Make sure, so. All right, guys, so I think we're done with that part. Um. Jamie is going to provide us some more stuff on the swimming pool, correct?
Yeah, it's a little bit of what I have. So there's information that you all should have in your minutes that just show you a rendering. And then I believe that that emailed out to everybody to show you some color images and like a aerial type view to give you an idea of the final. Um, ish, design, because there's always the, 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 to that divine. Um, but that's where we stand with our deliverables from Landmark Aquatic. And so now I believe the next stage we are at is, you know, kind of the money funding of the gauge. To figure out the details around how we're going to do that, we'll proceed forward.
Along with that, that, that bid that we've got is for the pool only, that's not counting the parking lot, correct?
Um.
We'd have to have parking lots.
For certain, yeah, it's for like the bath house and. That included, um, I think additional, something that we might put in, ice pop would be additional.
I admit, my big concern would be that parking lot because that's going to take a chunk of money because we're going to go concrete. Uh, concrete's almost two hundred twenty dollars square yard right now.
I think we're talking about like gravel.
We can't.
You can't.
You can't require businesses in town to pay for parking lots. It's, it's a ordinance debate on any of this.
So there's our answer as far as pays, so then that.
Now, you don't have to, you don't have to, you can have a pavement with a reasonable number of spots. And then, then you can do a gravel outside of that. But you have to have a, I think the wording is reasonable number of spots. And you got to remember, those kids aren't driving their cars. You know, parents. So you might have thirty kids and they're only three daughters.
Sure, sure. So drop them off.
I do remember last week, it included more than our first thinking. We were a little more surprised when they were holding out on us and then like, no, it doesn't. And I can't remember the parking lot for sure, but I.
I'm, everything that I said, I don't think I see a parking lot. I've been concerned about that because.
That we were in a third of that.
Yeah, so and then we're going to have to make a road to it as well. So you're going to have to have all that dirt worked on and forward. So that's just something to keep in mind.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think that, I think that they'll come right off of the street.
Yeah.
The parking lot, so we won't be the road or maybe that.
You'll have to have some access way. I mean, it won't go straight to it. We're going to have to have somewhat of an access. We may, I mean, it may be only twenty, thirty feet, but there will have to be some kind of road work done. Get to the parking lot and all that stuff. It all depends on how it lays out and all that stuff. So, but we're on the right track, so.
So we have, at least we have that. And then I think as far as moving forward, um. I mean, the images that were shared, I believe are things that we can share as far as starting to. Market the project a little bit further when it comes to like this use tax and talking about. What it's going to be going towards. That was part of the reason why we did this was to have something a little bit more visual to show the community.
You're gonna have a swimming pool and with the use tax?
Well, it's good, it's one of the things that's in the community development, the pool, the sewer, or what we can't.
Not sewer, uh, sidewalks.
Sidewalks, roads.
Uh, stuff like, it's just, it's part of the stuff, not, it's not focused.
It's not the only thing, but it's one of the things that use tax.
It's basically saying, hey, this is what your money could help with in the future.
Exactly, but then our last meeting, I think he told us, um, correct me if I misunderstood, that, that, what we're looking at, that Dale shared was what we are to share with council to, for approval, so that we can move on. I think Rick was gonna need to have a visit with us or talk. Yeah, that's.
Okay, forty minutes out, please give these back to me. This is a, a terrible ballot. Write your answer on this and fold it over, don't sign it. I don't wanna know who you are, just from your opinion. The reason I'm doing this, is I know there's people in this room that won't talk. And we need them to talk. But I want you to consider something, if we're gonna move forward, we have to know how much money we're willing to spend. And you have to make that decision in this room at some point, okay? So I told Dakota, I'll be the bad guy, and Frank. I want you to write on that piece of paper, how much you personally are willing to spend a year on pool.
But we don't have any idea until you.
Well, we have an idea, how much you're willing to, you're gonna be judged. And, and that's why I wanna make sure you understand, you're gonna be judged. As we are on every decision we make. It doesn't matter what parks, law courts, senior center, doesn't matter what it is. Every time we've done something, people are judged the wrong way. Now, that's gonna happen here too. You have to decide how much money you're willing to spend a year on pool. Keep in mind that there's gonna be about forty-five dollars operating costs every year by the time you hit. Your lot yards and your chemical, taking care of the little things that has to be done every day, cleaning it. That's probably on the cheap side, but it can be done, though. Write down what you think is a fair amount that you think you can spend to your constituents. Kind of believe that's what I'm willing to spend, cuz we gotta make that decision, it has to be made.
Only with your guidance, though, as far as.
I'm giving you my guidance, you gotta quit looking for excuses and determine how much you're willing to spend. I can determine that for you.
That's, that's the council's purpose is to make decisions that are, so that's what.
But you were talking to us earlier about, you know, not spending anymore, saving so much like, like you discussed with the earlier.
And it should stay that way, and I told this young man, when it comes to next year this time, he'll be trying to put away, two hundred thousand dollars in general fund and two hundred thousand in water and sewer, and spend the rest of it however you want. But if you don't put that money away, you're gonna go broke in five years. So that's all I was telling him was about being careful. What I was telling you all is, don't make any big purchases without questioning me, now him. Don't vote on nothing unless you ask the questions, do we have the money and can we report?
This is just a consensus.
This is, this means nothing more than I can give your feedback as to what this council thinks, okay? And I don't wanna say anymore until you make that determination. Um, but it'll all come into focus, it'll all come into focus.
And I guess it's fair to assume my number is based on passing use tax. Cuz if I say we're not, I'm not comfortable spending any at the moment, but that's what I.
We just need a basic idea of what you're willing.
That's fair, and, it's gonna take more than the use tax.
Right.
Uh, to, to do it, and that's, that's fine too.
No, this is something I need to think about, I can't answer this on the fly. So I'll have it to you by the end of the day.
More information, so that's.
I'm looking through our budget right.
What kind of information can you possibly have, you know that the pool's gonna be granted, you got pictures of it, what it looks like.
And we know we can get a grant up to one million.
Well, that's how we do it. In the past, that's what it costs, cuz a lot of guards and the chemicals on the other key.
So is this the amount in addition to that?
How much are we willing to spend? He wants to know is, how much, fact, do you guys wanna spend? We just bought a ninety-six thousand dollar a year truck, right? All he wants to know is, how much are you willing to give up? We know the pool's three point five million dollars, but he just wants to have a general idea, what are we all willing to spend a year? Is it about a hundred thousand dollars, is it twenty dollars, what do you think's a fair number that we can spend? Consider, not considering any of all that stuff, we just need to kind of general consensus of what we're gonna spend.
Okay, that's good. You, you can, you don't have to turn that in if you don't want to, this gives me enough to go on. I have a couple. And again, I don't know who, cuz I didn't, I actually not signed. But I got a couple that says zero. I've got one that says fifty thousand a year. I've got one that says up to two hundred fifty thousand a year. One that doesn't give an amount, but I don't wonder why we closed the old pool. And one to a hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand.
I'd say one forty, I'm fine, I'm, I don't care, we'd be in private, I'll tell you exactly what I think.
Okay.
So I'd say one forty.
Now, let me tell you this, you can't buy that pool for one point. You can't even come close to buy that pool, because it's gonna cost three and a half million. If we could get, instead of maybe, to be honest with you, I thought we'd do that. I think we can get it, but even if half, we're gonna, we're looking at probably, by the time you get to parking lot, all your infrastructure in there, um, you're gonna be knocking on the door, the owner's gonna knock.
A little bit.
Maybe a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand less than that, to be fair. But that means we're gonna have to come up with two million dollars. Now, we, I can get you finance tomorrow for two million dollars. But it's gonna be on twenty years, they're not gonna go any longer than that. And it's gonna be at whatever going rate is right now, I don't know what's said, probably. And I can verify all that, that's what companies do. That's gonna come out to more than two hundred thousand dollars a year, not counting, the, the maintenance and the lifecarts. So all I'm saying is, we have to come together as a group, and, and gonna have to have some discussions about it. And a vote, how much are we gonna spend? Then I can tell you how big a pool you have, based on your work you've already done. And that's when you sit down, once that's been established, that's when you sit down and start budgeting, and say, okay, how do we need to? But we're all just running around in circles until we knew how much we're willing to spend, and. I'm only seeing two out of seven or eight, I'm only seeing two out of, of, uh, that, of that, I haven't even come close to enough, huh? Not even, so two hundred fifty, that's, that's not, that probably. But that's, that's what it's gonna be, and I'm just saying, I'm sorry, I hate being bad, uh, this is the last meeting I'm gonna talk. But you have to be honest with yourselves, and you have to come to some kind of agreement. Because we want to hell free, so we're too violent, but we're not gonna buy nothing until a majority of you tell us. And we can't go after financing until majority of you tell us, we're after patents. And you can do all planning in the world you want, and you're gonna be good. So. Can it be done? Sure, it can be done. But you do have to remember, you will be harshly judged. Because we've got streets that need to have.
I can tell you that one of the zeros on them papers is mine, and until we get, some substantial improvement to our infrastructure, streets, mainly the water service take care of itself. I don't see how we can justify spending that much money, four hundred thousand dollars a year, go home way on a street. And right now, they're just bandaiding them, I mean, they're spraying that spray on there, and they're spraying it over by the house the other day, but they're spraying over that coal patch, it's gonna come out, and it's gonna get water in it, and it's gonna be just like you look. And then you translate into the rough streets, how much maintenance goes down on your patrol cars when the, whenever they get beat, you know? Maybe if we get some good streaks, we can venture back from buying tuning cars a year to maybe to every other year. Uh, our streets are terrible.
Yep.
And, uh, I think that should be the main focus to anything we do right now. I feel like the water and sewer is also the focus, but their fund has to take care of themselves, they're not, correct? So, but, I mean, it, they're ridiculous, and, we're gonna be behind, be behind the eight ball, we're gonna have all this money spent on a pool or whatever. And you're gonna have to navigate chuggles to get around them. I mean, if I lived on Seventh Street over there, I'd be here every, every council meeting, right, then came, because it is terrible. And, uh, I, I just feel like that's where our, our biggest need is at the moment. Uh, I'll get off my sword.
Okay, I would like to know who decided to close the old pool. I wanna see documentation.
I don't know if there is, you know, I think it was, wasn't it, Becky?
Just anybody, I mean, I could go up there and say, hey, let's close the pool, I know nothing.
Sorry, many years come that they, they essentially.
I will say this, it's been, it's been inspected by engineer.
Where's the paper?
I know we got it, uh, you know, whether I implanted it or not.
No, well, I mean, I'm just saying.
But we did have them crawl under there, inspecting, we're talking fifteen years ago. And we had to shoot gravel up under it because of the holes, and we put that water, and we're afraid it's gonna collapse. And then our, then our, uh, piping is starting to rust, it needs to be replanted. Now, I will tell you this, if one of our guys said, why don't we tear the bottom out of it? Uh, put a new base under it, replant it, pour the concrete back, and put a liner in.
Right.
And now we've got a swimming pool for, um, two hundred thousand instead of.
Yeah.
For me. Uh, there's an argument that that's putting good money after bad in that particular pool location. And I could make that argument really easy, and I could see it being fixed, I don't see it lasting. Much more than five more years, that's expensive, cuz it's got cracks in this upper level surfaces. You know, and, and, those things just don't last forever, and it's pretty old. You know, it's gonna. I'm not sure it's a great, uh, uh, good, I'm not saying it can't be done. I asked the guys to think outside the box, and that's what they came back with. Now, I don't have any question, they can tear the bottom out, I have no question, they could replant it, and they could, uh, get the bottom compacted and pour eight inches of concrete, probably be there in two hours or so. But that's not the only thing you have to worry about, it's the sidewalls, they're aging. We don't know what's behind them or what's not behind them, uh, because we thought everything was fine underneath, but it wasn't. And, and I'm talking about something I've seen with my own mind, um, if they're, if it was big enough, I could get in there. That's too big of a hollow area, don't make those noises about my son. That's too big of an area to, uh, uh, have that much weight and water and kids on it. So, uh, I don't disagree with it being closed, um. There's, I'll tell you another, I, I made a stupid suggestion, that I'm gonna tell you what it means. Why not go on each ward and build a small neighborhood pool? Two hundred thousand dollar streets, and it'll serve a neighborhood, kids get to go to pool with their buddies. You go Springfield, there are major subdivisions out there on. And, and it goes, it comes down to why they have their own, because they're cheaper when you build small, when you build big ones, they're higher.
Oh, I just don't see how a town the size of Mountain Grove with our tax base the way it is, how we could, how many years would it take to pay off three point five million?
They're only gonna, they're only gonna finance it, I want, that's, that's, they're not gonna do long now. They don't give long-term, long-term worth of assets. But, but I'm just, I'm just trying to be a downer, it can be done. I just don't think it can be done until we get our ducks in a row. And, and can look at honestly, that cost and that budgeting and, and the timeframe. Uh. And I really think it's one of the best councils that I've seen in at least thirty years. And I don't wanna see jeopardize the position, cuz I think that's what's gonna happen. I'm just telling you, that's what's gonna happen, and I, I'd be safe to say that, but.
Dan. So I'm, I'm gonna be the unpopular person here, and, and my bosses can tell me to be quiet. Um, as a supervisor, my concern is, we're willing to pay that, but we also need to look at, how are we gonna keep employee retention? Um, cuz every time we, then I was talking to our, our new administrator today, every time that we give a pay raise, that's, we have to come up with that money somewhere. And my concern is, I mean, it's fantastic to have a new pool, but I gotta have officers. And you just asked me, Jamie, you know, about if I was actually a pool, this is the first time in two years I've had a pool staff. So my concern is, how do I stay competitive if we spend all the money on a pool? So, I hope I'm not speaking out of term, and I do apologize, so. Well, what Danny says with that, we've got two officers, not nothing bad going on with, they love it, they're, they're moving up themselves in the next year. So we're gonna have to find two more officers, these guys have been here for, one of them's been here, what, twelve years, thirteen years, something, whenever I started. And so we're about to lose one of our best ones, because, well, he's got a chance to do something better with his logic. And, and my department's not the only one, I mean, fire department, obviously, and, and it's, the street guys, it's just hard to find. So we've got to find a way for speaking tennis.
It, it costs us seventy-six thousand dollars this year to get a awesome living price. It's gonna be more next year, that's the incremental goes up. However, that's what I was saying, you make them say two hundred thousand general fund, two hundred thousand water and sewer, and we can keep funding, what is worried about? You're still gonna have money to do the other things you wanna do, but your driving taxes and that all. You know, we've been doing sports out of a hard one, but we got too many ten-year loans. Let's stop with the ten-year loans, we got it to spend to buy something, buy it, if you don't, don't. And you'll get back in a real fast time, you'll get back to where you need to be, so that you can pay for these things. But, um, we've got, well. We got a lot of money spent on ten-year loans, and, uh, it, it really needs to affect us. Because when we were putting on, paying for things, we bought them last year, put it off today, but this year. And by the way, next time I ask you how much your fire cost, please somebody tell me the truth. Cuz I built ninety-six thousand from four different people, and it's a hundred and nineteen thousand, but we didn't find that out till today. And that puts us in a hell of a jam, when you don't get the right numbers, we don't give them to me, I can't give them back to you for much. So I just want you to be careful. Um, but you see now, far apart, we're here, please talk to each other, communicate with one another, and come up with a game plan, because it's gonna take a vote in this room to go vote. And, and so the compromise has to be with you guys, not, not me or not over anything, I mean. Um, I'm just pretending to be, who am I, both of them?
All right, so I think we've pretty much beat that dog in the bush, right?
Got there. He's got his point across. So we're gonna table that one. Now everybody kind of have either one could seem like. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next bill of twenty twenty five dash zero eight, the second reading. You wanna read that or do you?
In order to change in subsection eight of section ninety five fifty two, this order conda applied to reading section subsection eight, and that being a new there a a new subsection eight. Um, it has to do with it's not illegal to verbally say something bad to a policeman or apartment, a city official. Is it if you're threatening? But they can make any gesture they want or say anything they want. Their first amendment right. So we had to change our orders to be legal. That's what we did.
So motion approved. That's the green.
I'm like, look for you there.
There. All right. Mark, would you go?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Motion approved. All right, we're done with the old business. We're gonna move into the new business and uh, we had something about the mosquito spraying, but they are not here to understand. And so we're gonna go pass that. We're gonna go to the land lease discussion and Rick or him, is he gonna take over the? So Rick, you're up.
We sent a picture to your package of a lagoon. About this. Everybody in?
No, no.
What's in the origin? It's the same with the pool. Yeah.
Tony Courtney is one to lease the property south of the first lagoon. Down through here, connects even. It's all trees, by the way, and he'll clean it up. Get rid of all the trees. If we lease it to him, so he can park on it. We're not using it. And to be honest, we can get the trees hung up. It'd be a good thing for us. Uh, but it's up to you. It's not like you're gonna get a lot of money off of it. You're talking five hundred dollars a year maybe. And and then uh, build up all the trees down.
Will they be here at a time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And um, we probably give him credit for the first couple of years, just for him all, but but we're talking. Um, he's he's bought into crossing the street from other land and he's getting credit, but he just doesn't, you know? So he's, you know, needing more. And it's like that we're not using it, not making anything up. Up to you. I told him my answer.
I make motion at the time.
Okay, have a second for that?
What do I have anything? Thing we're ever gonna use it for anyway, by the whole viewing anymore?
No, we haven't in the lease where we had to. We just get out of peace.
And then we're gonna have just do it at what the standard rate is for that amount of land. Just get fair rate down. We're gonna ask him if he would, if he would pay the full payment. Well, that'd be great. Well, problems off.
It's just our land and you have to say it, so I couldn't do it without you.
Mark, what do you say? What's your vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 All in favor? All right. And now Rick has talked about.
We had a public hearing that lasted three minutes at six. Um, and we declared to the public that our tax rate for that coming year is zero. We don't have property in in federal property taxes from Mountain Grove. But we said that zero every year. Our assessment. May I find it? I put it somewhere. Not where we're putting it. Our assessment was sixty seven billion dollars this year. Up a couple of million from last year and up about two billion from the year of course. Um, if uh, we were to go back into taxes, which I hope you don't, but we promised the owners of the wind. And we traded the amount of money we would make from those taxes for a yes vote on it. Once in sales back to give some money in half a year. So it would be uh, now I think, wouldn't be smart to go back on the horse, I don't think. Um, yeah.
I agree. I have it. I have one.
Um, you need to read the what the assessment is for um, this year. I think it's.
The total valuation, is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah.
Sixty five million, one hundred and thirty one thousand, four hundred and twenty six.
Is that for this year?
Yeah, that's a total for everything.
Okay, what about last year?
And I'm looking at, I don't see.
Should be right next year. There's three calls, twenty three, twenty four and twenty five.
This is really weird. Oh, last year, I think it was sixty three million, seven hundred fifty three thousand, four hundred seventy dollars. Yeah.
So going back two million a year, three million a year average. Um, if you're gonna ever go back to that, you need to take the wrong people. With that point of reference, in the language, when I when I wrote them. Um, um, but anyways, it's a um thing to work. It's technical thing that the county has us do every year. We don't have a choice. We have to set it even though it's over. We have to set by a vote. So you would need to make the motion second vote. Now that I'm not gonna charge you.
I make motion sets tax limit zero.
Okay, have a second? And.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Voters will be happy. Um, next is Rick's gonna go over the bill twenty twenty five dash zero nine, first reading.
The ordinance uh, establishing procedures to solve potential conflicts of interest, potential interest for certain officials. This is a requirement by the state. Usually they would send you out a form. And uh, you'd have to fill out that form if you've done any business personally with the city. Uh, you have to, if you have top of business, to you have to declare whether you have any business with the city. They changed it and now are making us uh, pass a new ordinance every two years. Ours expires September the fifteenth. So this is just a replace effective states request, replace our old one. So that none of you get in trouble uh, if you have any business with the city. And I'm not aware of it. I don't have any business with the city. But over the years, when we had a mayor that had his own tire shop and we'd been tires once in a while. And we've had uh, councilmen that were business people. And once in a while we had to buy something that they they had some, they had to declare all that. States just saying we're gonna do it once a month, other ordinance. And then election two year, two years, nine, eleven, all over again.
Can we understand that?
I make motions except for.
Do I have a second?
I'm not hearing part of this. Our our microphones are not working.
Hold on, hold on. That's because the land, my land, sorry. It is a required ordinance by the state to uh, that we have to pass every two years. And it protects us against conflict of interest in case any of you or me or you go to have to do any business with the city, personal business. It has to be clear with all our thinking.
I've done a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yep. Yes. Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
And we passed. Okay, uh, next thing we're gonna do is the resolution twenty twenty five dash oh three, emergency management.
Okay. This was a.
Mic check.
Yeah, this is a resolution. Um, and we're probably going for nothing, but uh, still calling, we just gonna do it. They they filed for a uh, a grant for supply those two sirens. And uh, this is a resolution designating the mayor as the authorized signer on those cranes. And we need to, that's a good idea to have it this anyway, but this is a requirement for our rank.
I make motion to add revolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks.
Awesome. Yep.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Motion handed.
For resolve that David Todd, Mayor of Mountain Grove, Missouri is hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Mountain Grove, Missouri. This mitigation project and a file of Missouri State Emergency Management Agency for the purpose of taking potential assistance under the broad and chief staff review and Emergency Assistance Act.
And.
Motion to accept that now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to go on that way. This is kinda. Being out there. Yep.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
All right, now we're fishing.
Okay, again, this is gonna be kind of a wasted effort. We got to pass this next resolution so that we assure them that they won't have to pay more than seventy five thousand, six hundred dollars for the new sirens. Now, the reason I said it's a waste, because we've already been notified that they're not gonna fund everything on the sirens. They're only gonna try to fund one, that's two. So our amount's gonna go down, so is theirs, but in order for them to reapply for the one, we gotta do this so they could throw it all out the door and start all over. So uh, that's what this resolution's for. And they they said their money from the feds was cut back. And they didn't know till this week. So that's.
By the way, Washington, here's a reading of that resolution. Okay, have a second.
Starting before.
Yep.
Yes.
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 Whereas City of Mountain Grove, uh, here definitely called a subgrante. County of Wright has made application to the Missouri State Emergency Management Agency, the Federal Emergency Management Agency for funding from the hazard mitigation grant program in the amount of seventy five thousand, six hundred dollars for the total project cost. Whereas the subgrante recognizes the fact this grant is based on the highest share basis with the federal share not exceeding seventy five percent and the non-federal share being a minimal twenty five thousand, twenty five percent of the total project cost. Minimum non-federal share of either cash or in kind match. Therefore, the subgrante agrees provided they available up to twenty five percent, which is eighteen thousand, nine hundred dollars of non-federal funds to be used to meet the minimal twenty five percent match required that this mitigation application. Now, I'm sorry about that.
That motion approved.
Make motion.
Second.
First. Yep.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Motion for that.
Okay, enough of that nonsense.
Now you get to do the brick before. We're on the home trip, guys.
We're on the home trip. You are uh, waiting to pass sales tax before and then talking for the sheet in there for uh, for the uh, motor vehicle tax, on the fuel tag. Just to give an idea of what that's uh, just for your information on uh, we were down a little bit in July on sales taxes, you can see, but we've been up for most of the year. So we're still, oh, could actually consider going backwards. Uh, close to a hundred three and up. Oh, yeah, and uh, bulldog pipe. We're done for our parts. Twenty eight, twenty streets, so the work is complete. Uh, airport project, we're having the being uh, this week at the airport with the engineers and contractors to uh, go over their schedule, their ready to start work. Uh, luckily they had started back working yet. And we're inside of last week, building the bank myself. Uh, those work down the river. And the Long Valley Building, moving to the network's done. So they're good coverage. Uh, Bruce Street, we're still with delay, waiting on that grant, the other thirty six thousand dollars. And they still think they're doing it. Down there on that route, we're walking their way, uh, for the gap that last week. And uh, and they're gonna start raising walls on the building. So that's still along. Uh, this is gonna be my last in the year for, I'm gonna turn it over empty now. Uh, so um, I'll be here till September nineteenth, then I'm gonna go home. Yeah, and I, well, I won't hear that's me, but I will find them to talk to you. They're just calling on the phone. Uh, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, before we do our last bill then on the bills, I personally would just like to say you thank for coming in and doing everything you have been and continue to do. You've helped me out a lot, learned in my position, and you've been a great asset for the city. So on behalf of the city and this council, I would appreciate, I appreciate you very, very much, Rick.
Thank you. When you say you actually let me drive the way and I didn't realize how much I missed all the people. Uh, and it's uh, I'm gonna have to come back once in a while to go to distance. All the horse crazy thing to get rid of, you know?
If anybody comes into his office before he leaves, expect to set a watch, you'll be there at least two hours. I can promise you that. All right, Lawrence, do you wanna take us home on the bill?
Um, hopefully everybody received it on their computer. For some of these have been paid and Jamie, I have all of those on a bill. Whenever you want to come and buy them. And some of them, if you look at your report, if you do not see a check number, they have not been paid. Um, waiting for the council, um, totaled five hundred eighty one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars of persons. And that's for the month.
Everybody okay with that?
So maybe.
All right, have a second on that.
Okay.
Okay. Mark?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Yes.
Well, we may do that. Also, we'd like to let up Dakota. I think he's gonna be, we all got to interview him. We felt great about his interview. I think Mark was gonna want him out of town. So uh, I think he's gonna do this city very, very good. He's young, he's eager. We'll be all a good team. So uh, people in the public that's watching this, if you see him, welcome to hear him here to this town. So with that, do you have anything else to say?
No, I just wanna say thank you. I appreciate, I want you to know I'm humbled by the opportunity. Uh, I'm excited to get moved to town. I can't get here quick enough because I'm I'll be driving back and forth for a little while. So uh, uh, I'm excited to get here. You have a great crew in the city. That was evident from day one, now six fifty this morning when I walked through the door. Uh, and I respect Rick. I wanna say thank you to him. Learned a lot just in day one. I felt like I was drinking from a fire hydrant today. Uh, I'm excited to be here, uh, really am. My family's excited to be here. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council for this opportunity. It's it's humbling. I appreciate it.
So that being said, everybody be safe going home. We are adjourned. Oh, yeah. Sorry. I gotta head myself. Yeah. Outside of the motion to adjourn. Second. You say that?
Yeah.
We just adjourned. Are we good to adjourn, guys?
We are.
Okay, we are adjourned.
Oh, oh, how are you adjourned? Well, how are you doing? There you go. That's a plus. Ian, how are you doing? Looking pretty good.
Looking pretty good. You're alright, you're alright.
Nope, you're alright.
You are okay.
I'll give you one. I just wanna say thanks for being here. I appreciate it. Sometimes that's what you can say and just. Okay, sounds good. Thanks for being here. Appreciate you. How are you? Oh, okay, well, thanks for being here. I sure appreciate it, yeah. Well, thank you. Well, thank you. I appreciate the support, so, yep, it's always nice to. Okay, well, alright, well, hopefully all the hands are good, you know, so, that's alright, so. Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, well, good guy this guy is, so, he's, he's pretty good, yeah. I put my reputation on the line for him. Thank you, I appreciate it. Well, thank you, I appreciate it. Yep, thank you. Okay.
He's gonna join.
Well, so, I, I, I will do that, uh, so I didn't know this before I made a commitment. Rick had scheduled a meeting out at the airport or something like that, and it starts at eleven, so I hope I can cut away at eleven thirty on Thursday, but it's, it starts at eleven at meeting at the airport. At noon at the Grove, yeah.
Back road back there.
Yeah, okay.